Can we do? I knew it would work. Okay, at seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. I can't remember the last time we had a crowd like this. Um, let's see. First off, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Welch.
I'll second.
Uh, second by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Um, community comments. Did anybody show up tonight for anything that is not on tonight's agenda? And the cannabis regulation stuff is on tonight's agenda, so that's not what we're talking about here. But if you have anything else that you wanted to talk about that's not on tonight's agenda, now is your opportunity. All right. Hearing none, we're gonna move on to presentations and reports. Up first, uh, we have employee service awards, which is always a really, really fun night at our council meetings. And, uh, when there are service awards with the fire department, we know that we'll get a good turnout. So, um, this evening, we are going to celebrate, uh, three firefighters. Chad Roush, Tony Dewalter, and Scott Haas. Um, we'll start with Chad. I, there he is. He's hiding. Worked with Chad. Uh, Chad has led the Gulf tournament the last couple of years and does a fantastic job doing it. Um, in addition to all of the firefighter department duties and all of that kind of good stuff. You wanna?
No, I just, I wanna thank Chad for all the work he does while on the medical supplies. And really, if you think about, you know, what we need as a team and the fire department needs to provide support for people and the work that he does, it's very much appreciated. I know he does it with great care.
Congratulations, Chad. I think maybe we'll just go through everybody and then we'll do the pictures at the end. I know you're really into the pictures. Um, up next, we have, uh, Tony Dewalter, who is celebrating ten years on the fire department. There she is. Tony, in my interactions, has been kind of the Jill of all trades on the fire department. If I need to know something, if I have a question about something, if something needs to be explained to me, Tony is always very willing to share her time and help out, um, all of the community events. I can't remember the last time I didn't see you at a community event. So, um, Tony is absolutely fantastic. Appreciate your contributions and thank you for everything you do.
And just from a team perspective, if there's anybody that, uh, that really steps up when people are feeling down and they need some positivity, Tony is the first one to pump somebody up and give them that extra support that they need. And so that's appreciated in a lot of ways. So, thank you, Tony, for all that you do for our team.
And last but not least, uh, Scott Haas is celebrating twenty years on the Carver Fire Department. Um, Scott really likes to make sure that he can attend council meetings every Monday night. So, he said, "Thank goodness I'm being recognized tonight because I'm not able to make it to the Jordan, uh, city council meetings." So, I really have to be here tonight. It was something like that, wasn't it?
Something like that.
No, Scott, um, Scott is always there, always available, has been a high contributor to the fire department for the last twenty years. Um, and I don't think that we can mention Scott without mentioning his wife. Because I think if anybody in this room doesn't know who makes dozens of gallons worth of chili for the fire department's open house, it is Mrs. Haas. So, that is your claim to fame. Um, and I was recently told that the way that you brown all the meat is two frying pans at a time, which kind of makes my wrist hurt, just thinking about it. Thank both of you for your time and your contributions to the fire department.
And Scott, uh, one of the first firefighters that I met when I started here. And if there's anybody that is kind of the definition of service to the community, it's Scott. If, um, I just know that if I had a flat tire on the way home, he'd be probably there before I had my car door open to help me.
You'd be in luck, because you wouldn't know how.
Also very true. I own that. But Scott, Scott's there when anybody needs them, and he's always there to, um, help me sort through things. If, if I'm thinking about something a little bit too complex, he just cuts right to it and says, "This is the common sense approach." So, I've always appreciated Scott's point of view. So, thank you, Scott.
All right, let's take some pictures.
Did you do it or did Catherine and I do this?
Sorry, Brian, you had to take the arm more.
Anyone know how to put it?
See, even cheese dough.
Oh, I have one kid.
Come on, come on.
He says he's favorite.
That's gonna be a hard.
I guess we're all my favorite.
I have to say that for sure.
She didn't mean that bumping her kid. You didn't hear that, right?
It's not recording, so don't worry.
All right, family.
Oh, come on.
Let's go. Favorite child?
Yes.
Now we can hear you.
Gotta give him a friend in here, too.
All right, um, I'm gonna just, um, move around the agenda just a little bit and move up the consent agenda here because we have something that I want to pull off of it. So, uh, for the consent agenda, I am gonna pull item number seven point six, Resolution 133 dash twenty-four, accepting a donation from Neil and Susan Erickson for an AED. So, with that exception, can I get approval for the consent agenda?
I'll make approval for the consent agenda, minus.
Councilmember Sayer.
My, uh, pulling off agenda number seven point five.
Six.
Sorry, seven point six.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Sayer, second by Councilmember Welsh. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, uh, let me find my notes here. Um, I just wanted to pull this item off the consent agenda because I knew that we'd have some very special guests in attendance. And these kinds of donations are really significant. They can save lives. And this is a special one, um, in memory of somebody who is really important to somebody who is near and dear to the Carver Fire family and our community. Um, Tom Walsh passed away earlier this year. Um, and he was known as a dad, a firefighter, a grandfather. He was a lot of things. He wore a lot of hats. Um, and he left quite a legacy. I think all you have to do is take a look at, uh, the individuals who have Walsh as their last name, or had Walsh as their last name, on Carver Fire, and you can just see what an impact that he had. Um, also, um, really outstanding, and I think something that you and I talked about, Tim, was the barriers that your dad broke. As someone with a disability who worked in the fire service, it was pretty darn cool, too. Um, so, um, I just want to share my appreciation for this donation, um, for the impact, um, that it's gonna have on our community. Again, we were talking before the meeting. I hope it never gets used. Um, but it will. It'll probably get very well-used, and it will probably save lives in our community. So, um, a huge shout-out, a huge congratulation, or a thank you to Neil and Susan Erickson, who donated twenty-five hundred dollars to the city of Carver, which is being used for an AED, which will be going out with the fire department on our calls. So, I just, um, let's see. With that, I want to read, uh, the, the resolution. It's Resolution 133 dash twenty-four. City of Carver, Carver County, Minnesota, Resolution: Acknowledging Acceptance and Appreciation for Donation. Whereas Minnesota statute four sixty-five dot zero-three requires that cities accept donations for the benefit of its citizens in accordance with the terms prescribed by the donor and, whereas Neil and Susan Erickson have graciously donated twenty-five hundred dollars to the Carver Fire Department and, whereas the donation was made in the memory of Tom Walsh and, whereas the funds will be used to purchase an AED, now therefore, be it resolved, that the city of Carver, this, uh, that the city of Carver City Council now accepts the above donation and, be it further resolved, that the city of Carver, along with the Carver Fire Department, expresses its sincere appreciation and gratitude for the generous donation adopted by the city of Carver today, the twenty-first of October, 2024. So, thank you for the donation. Now that we're all crying pictures? Oh, Erin, we're losing them for the MS4. It's MS4 night, guys.
Run now while you can.
Um, okay, let's see. We skipped over the listening session, so, um... Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, so with that, I would like to make a motion to approve item number seven point six. Um, approve the resolution for, uh, 133 dash twenty-four, accepting a donation from Neil and Susan Erickson for an AED.
I'll second.
We've got a motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by Councilmember Mock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Thank you. Not going out tonight. Um, okay, going back to the cannabis listening session. This is the order you want to do it in? Yes?
Okay.
Okay. Um, all right, to five point two, Listening Session for Cannabis Retail Establishment Zoning Regulations. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have a listening session talking about cannabis dispensary zoning. So, I'll give a little presentation. We'll open it up to the public for a listening session tonight. The city of Carver is tasked with drafting and adopting language related to cannabis dispensaries and where they can be located. So, they must be permitted somewhere in the community, but we have some discretion using our zoning code. So, the things that we zone, commercial versus residential, that's our mechanism to deciding where cannabis dispensaries can be in the community. So, it must be somewhere. We'll, we'll work through some of that with the Planning Commission and the city council. At this time, Carver is anticipated to have one licensed dispensary based on population. So, it's set by the state, and the Office of Cannabis Management will license the dispensaries. So, your role tonight at the twenty-first meeting is listening only. We would ask that if there was dialogue or questions outside of just listening, staff can follow up with the person who's speaking. Otherwise, we're looking for information from the community, thoughts, feelings, opinions, about our proposed ordinance. So, we don't have anything drafted right now, but we'll need to work towards it by the end of 2024. So, we're, we solicited information. This was posted as a newsflash on our city website, posted to Facebook. We also, uh, know some of the people that might care about this in our community. So, we shared this information about as far and as wide as we could, just to get some people in the room to offer some feedback so we can make decisions based on what people are feeling that might be impacted by these decisions. So, the big question tonight is, should cannabis dispensaries require buffering from certain uses, such as schools, parks, residential treatment facilities, or daycares? So, many communities are working through this at the exact same time that we are. This is not something that only Carver is doing. And many communities are choosing to create distance buffers that dispensaries must be from certain users. So, what that would do would take from the property line of any, uh, use that we determine that we'd like to buffer and make sure that a cannabis dispensary cannot be within X number of feet from those property lines of the entire property. Again, many, uh, communities are choosing to buffer daycares, parks, residential treatment facilities, and schools. So, it's at our discretion what we would like to buffer, how big we want the buffers to be. We can choose all, we can choose none, and then set those different buffer distances. So, it's at our discretion, the Planning Commission and city council. We've gotten some feedback so far, just knowing that this discussion was coming. So, this past Friday, we had our Business Alliance meeting, which is a really well-attended group. Uh, business owners primarily downtown. So, we heard feedback from three business owners, one downtown property owner and chamber staff, just getting some feedback about it in a casual setting. In general, the consensus was that dispensaries are comparable to bars and liquor stores. So, thinking about our downtown, there are bars, dispensaries might fit in that same location based on some feedback that we got from downtown business owners. And then the conversation also included the use of cannabis in public, which was kind of the red flag for most people of, if it's allowed, can people be smoking on the sidewalk, which you cannot? So, I think that put a lot of the business owners at ease, knowing that that precaution is always there. And then staff additionally received feedback from one resident after we posted. That was included in the packet. So, next steps, tonight is the listening session. We'll bring this back to you at your November eighteenth work session. So, if people are here and they want to provide some feedback, that will be the council's time to discuss, to work through the details, think about what people said, share some information for staff so we can start drafting that ordinance based on what you hear tonight, your thoughts, feelings, et cetera. November twenty-first, Planning Commission will review the listening session and the council discussion. So, at that point, I'll bring a draft forward to the Planning Commission, have them review. They will not be acting that night. They'll just be taking their first look at it, knowing that this information will be new, but guided from the listening session and the city council. The Planning Commission then will hold the public hearing, since it will be embedded in our zoning code. So, chapter fifty of the city code, which is zoning, the Planning Commission's responsible for that work. We are needing to move up the Planning Commission one week. So, in December, Planning Commission is slated to fall outside of both city council meetings. So, it sometimes hits where I'm right in between. This one falls outside. So, we are proposing to move the Planning Commission public hearing up one week, which we will notice. I let the Planning Commission know already to start marking their calendars. And then December sixteenth will be the city council review for decision. So, again, tonight is just a listening session, take feedback, hear questions, comments from people related to cannabis dispensaries, and if we should require buffering from certain users. I will pass it to you.
All right, thank you. All right, now is your turn. I assume many of you are here for the speaking portion of our listening session. As you saw, Erin directed us that we up here need to be doing the listening, so we are here to listen to you. Um, if and when you're ready to come up and speak, please introduce yourself with your name, your address, um, and take a seat right up here. Can I ask Erin one clear, my question? Yeah. Um, Erin, I was, when you said that you, you especially noticed the downtown businesses, is that correct? So, some of those are rent, renters?
Correct.
Do the renters get all the information that we know of, too?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. All right, who wants to go first? Guys, it's gonna be hard to listen if nobody talks.
I should say, these are all application folks.
Oh, okay, well, then I'll stop looking at you guys.
Okay.
I will break ice.
Please do. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, so, my name is Sam Blank, uh, and I'm the principal at Carver Elementary. So, I am a Victoria resident, but I want to advocate for, um, Carver Elementary. Um, and I am definitely in favor of having a buffering distance, uh, between, you know, the dispensaries and where schools are at. Uh, my last two years, uh, working in the middle school, um, it's been, you know, my experience that the amount of cannabis in schools has increased, especially at the middle and high school level. Um, and while I don't see, um, a huge difference for our elementary school kids, um, I do constantly worry about, you know, creating a safe and welcoming and learning environment for our students. And I think that includes our surrounding area. Um, and, you know, I, what I like to think about is just, you know, we have our, our kids that are playing outside. We have a park just like adjacent to our school. Um, and I want to make sure that we're really mindful about the distance that a, a dispensary is from our school. Um, while I know that it is illegal for, um, people to smoke, like, on sidewalks and streets like that, where there's a dispensary, there's a higher likelihood that people will be using it in public. And, um, you know, I don't want our children, you know, having to see that, or somebody at the park might be using, um, cannabis. Um, and it's just something that I'm always gonna be mindful of and just gonna advocate for our kids, um, in our community to just make sure that we are, you know, creating a safe distance. I'm not here to say what the specific distance is, but just significant enough where we're just being mindful of, um, not exposing our children to, um, things like that at such a young age. So, thank you.
Thank you. We can start calling on people. There we go.
Uh, I'm Nate Royce. Um, live at 104 Sixth Street West, or perhaps 120 Broadway, depending on time of day. Um, and I just, uh, wanted to get a few things said. Um, one is a point of clarification. I was reading on the state of Minnesota's website somewhere today. I think there's a limit on the setback distance. Is that right? Five hundred feet from a daycare and thousand feet from a school?
Correct.
Okay. So, we can't do like a infinite distance and push it right to the edge of the city. Okay. Um, the other thing that I, um, I've got a, a family member that's really been impacted, um, by too much use of, of these materials. And, um, so, I'm not going to go into details on that, but, um, in my, in the course of my research and trying to understand where he's at, I've learned that, um, the percentage, um, of THC and products has gone from two percent in the seventies to between twenty and thirty percent today. So, they're much more potent. Um, and some are saying that because of the increased demand, they're gonna go as high as fifty percent in the next, uh, few years, maybe five to ten years. So, um, it's definitely gotten more stronger, which makes me concerned as a parent and business owner and everything else. Um, I understand it's legal. I understand it needs to be sold somewhere. Um, and I just want to kind of set that context, that these are getting more and more powerful, and there's being more and more, not direct correlation, uh, or causation, but increase in psychosis has definitely been noticed by the medical community, and they're still trying to figure all of that out. So, I want to be careful to couch my words and say, "I'm not saying there is a definite cause and effect there," but they're definitely concerned about it in the medical community. Um, just turned fifty. Excuse me. The other, the last thing that I'll, that I'll mention is that, um, I've noticed, um, that the marketing and the product design of a lot of these products is very colorful and uses cartoon characters and things like that. So, I am concerned about children, uh, finding them, picking them up, uh, ingesting them. Um, and, uh, for that reason, I think that a buffer zone from daycares and schools is a, is a good thing to consider, uh, for the city. Um, and as, uh, Erin mentioned earlier, many, if not most, or all communities are considering those types of buffer zones. And I think it would be appropriate for Carver to do that as well. And the last, last thing I'll say is that, um, I don't personally have any animus toward the, the business community that would be looking to do this type of a business in Carver. And, um, if, uh, if one opens, then I think the community should, um, be open to it and support it, but also with the, the appropriate level of, um, due diligence and consideration. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Nate.
Hi, my name is Jessica Kruger. I live at 125 Elm Drive or 309 Broadway, same thing. Um, I have River Wild Learning Center here in Carver. Um, and I guess, uh, both points, both speakers, I hear both and I see both. I have a family member who's worked in mental health, so I know the other side effect of cannabis. Um, I also know that with legislation coming, it's not going away. Um, where my business is located, I'm literally seventeen feet from a bar right now. Um, and so I feel like we have, um, we have things in town that already impair people, you know, one way or another way, whether it's alcohol or cannabis. Um, and so for me, I don't feel like my business would be affected downtown with a buffer zone. Um, we keep my kids safe and I keep them away. I, you know, am hoping that people will follow the ordinances and not smoke and do things that they're not supposed to do downtown. Um, and we just kind of operate as we are. People are going to the business next door. Um, they'll be going to a business possibly across the street wherever that comes up to be. be going to a business possibly across the street, wherever that comes up to be. I obviously do not appreciate the side effects of cannabis and personally don't use, but I know that it's coming. And so how can we keep kids safe, but then also know that, you know, it's an impairing thing, just like alcohol. So I feel like if it's downtown with the other people doing it, I don't see a major conflict of interest for myself.
Thanks, Jessica.
No, just here to listen.
Eric?
Just listening.
Tony?
I'm here.
Cory?
Cody.
Cody.
No, I don't have anything to share.
Oh, if you come up, you got us.
Yeah, I see you got one.
Thanks, Cody.
Cody Balk, 1922 Green Ash Drive. I just had a question about what, so I know you shared it on the PowerPoint, but what from the federal government is mandating that you have to have at least one, or you can't prevent them? Can you just tell a little bit more about that? That seems kind of intriguing to me.
I can take that.
Thanks.
Mayor and Council. So it's actually not a federally initiated mandate, but the new state legislation that passed in Minnesota, not this past session, but in 2023, which legalized adult-use cannabis, there's language in that says you, as a city, if you cannot prohibit these uses, and if you choose to register the retail of cannabis, you can limit it, but you can't limit it to any fewer than one per 12,500 people. So because Carver falls below that 12,500 number, the amount that we can limit these businesses in the community is one, you round out. So maybe at some point, too, when Carver continues its growth, there's going to be a mandate to potentially have to have another, or allow another. But I think it's also worth pointing out that, you know, cities may or may not have up to the limit that they can, that they can establish. I think the market is going to dictate that. For example, some cities that are big enough could have two or three or four, and it may not make sense from a business perspective to have that many dispensaries or retail establishments in the community. But it is a state statute that limits us at one because of the size of Carver, so.
Jen? Yeah, thanks for coming up. Jen?
I'm just listening.
Okay. All right, this is your last opportunity to share your thoughts for this listening session. Great. Thank you guys for coming. Thank you for everybody who spoke. Whoa, don't leave, you're gonna miss the MS4 presentation.
The door's locked.
You can't get out.
Oh, we got a page. No, we got a page 10 minutes ago. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Let's see. Okay, so now moving to 8.1 United Properties. Thank you for keeping me organized. Okay, Ms. Smith, UP preliminary and final plat.
Thank you. Like you mentioned, tonight we are reviewing a few applications from United Properties. So we're looking at preliminary plat, final plat, and the developer's agreement. So a little bit of information where we are talking about the property we call Carver Commons. The entire property was once owned by United Properties. We have a United Properties true legend in the room tonight, and Keith Alston, so welcome. He knows the history of the site far better than I do. So if you go back to 2008, I'm gonna tap into Keith's knowledge. But we've been working on developing this site for the past couple of years, so it's home to QuickTrip, Next Steps Learning Center, Hometown Bank, and Mocha Monkey. So thinking about where we're at, the corner of 212 Jonathan Carver Parkway and Monroe Drive. So this application is a little bit unique, that the United Properties portion of the application is to review a lot. So we're creating a lot for commercial development. United Properties is slated to complete all of the site utilities and access into the site, and then sell the property to an end user. So the United Properties application does not contemplate an end user. The next portion of our agenda contemplates that user, but right now, we're just reviewing the United Properties preliminary plat, final plat, and developer's agreement, primarily for those utilities. So it's getting the streets in, it's getting the infrastructure that are connecting to GCP. So an overview of the site, so the site we're talking about right now is Lot 1 Black 1, which is on the screen now. And then I just wanted to highlight some additional areas on the United Properties site. So this is Hometown Bank, this is the QuickTrip. So in creating Lot 1 Black 1, there still is some developable space north of both of those businesses. There's a small outlot just east of Next Steps, and then Outlet A is a large developable space. Outlet B is primarily ponding, so that is not developable. But moving forward, we anticipate some more applications coming through the process for the Carver Commons sites for commercial users. Something that I am personally really excited about, about this application, is that the connection of utilities here will connect into Jonathan Carver Parkway. So we've been thinking about this connection for a really long time. We contemplated it at the time of street construction of Jonathan Carver Parkway. So you can see that the curb line tracks for where that turn lane will be. Next time you're driving south, take a look over, you'll start to see and feel where that turn lane is going to come in. United Properties has said that adding this infrastructure, they think will lead to pretty quick development for the remainder of their sites to get an additional access, especially off County or at 11, to get into some of the remainder of that site. So, as nerdy as it might be, the infrastructure portion of this project can be exciting, I think. So some details about the United Properties request, the Slot 1 Black 1, which is 1.79 acres. The property is guided commercial in our comprehensive plan. It's already rezoned to freeway commercial, and it will be next-door neighbors through QuickTrip, Next Steps, Hometown Bank, and Mocha Monkey. Again, additional sites will still be available on the site that we will review, take through the process. So there it is on the screen in relation to the rest of the property, the plat that you're reviewing, so preliminary and final plat. So since this was part of a plating process, a public hearing was required. The Planning Commission held that at their September 19th meeting. We sent notice to property owners within 350 feet, posted in the Waconi Patriot, posted at City Hall. The notice did include Les Schwab details. So I know that I'm asking you to think about this as two different applications, but we didn't want a resident to open it, get a little bit confused, saying, I know they're talking about a project, what is this notice? So we included some details there. The Planning Commission recommended approval on a 5 to 0 vote of the United Properties portion of the project. So again, tonight is review of preliminary plat, final plat, and the DA. This is where I said I was going to turn it over to Erin and Dave for a couple blanks that are in the DA, if you looked at it really closely.
Erin, just real quickly before we get to the gentleman.
Yeah.
Are the 16 properties, those along Spring Creek Drive on the east side of Jonathan Carver Parkway?
Primarily, yes, but then it was like QuickTrip, Hometown, Next Step, that side, too.
Mayor and Council, so one thing I'll add, the development agreement, right now, we have a blank in there for the amount of the letter of credit. As a reminder, we always require developers, in this case UP, to provide a letter of credit to guarantee the construction of utilities, streets, sidewalks, other types of public improvements that are required. This is a bit unique because they're doing a lot of private infrastructure. All their internal access and drive and streets are actually privately owned and maintained, but there are a handful of public utilities, including water main, sewer main, some storm sewer piping. And then they are adding turn lanes, of course, on JCP, as well as some trail connections through the site. So we don't have, we weren't able to hone in on that number yet. I don't know exactly what it'll be, but it's not uncommon for sometimes those details to come together after council approval. We would just ask the council to understand that, you know, we'll work with Erin, the city engineer, to review the estimated costs of those improvements, to make sure that we're getting plenty to, in the event that they were to default, we could, you know, go in and complete the work if we really had to. And just as a reminder, the way that number is calculated, Erin looks to make sure he's comfortable with the estimated value or cost of those improvements, and then we take 150% of it. So we do give ourselves quite a bit of a cushion in case a default happens in a couple of years, and maybe some inflation happens and things cost more than, that we have enough to do that. So that is still a blank in the development agreement, and I just wanted to articulate why that was, and make sure that you know what you're approving tonight will eventually be a completed agreement. We'll just, that'll come together later.
Can I have one point of clarification? Is it 150%?
I'm sorry, 120?
I saw the development team start to share. Okay.
I was drafting an agreement for another community earlier, and it was 150. So I have my wires crossed. I apologize for that, but yes, it is 125.
Sometimes we just say things to my shirtless.
I saw the quick whisper panic of like, 150, so.
Well, our owners are already selling the twins to make sure they.
All righty, so I'm gonna ask the members of the UP team to come up, introduce themselves during the conversation, and then we can move forward.
Great. That's who goes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thanks for having us. Tom Strum with United Properties, here to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I guess my question is just, why is this so different? Why?
We typically would include in the plating process the end user. So United Properties is just creating the lot, and then we typically would just go through a building permit process altogether, instead of doing it as two separate applications. So in the next application with Les Schwab, we'll do a site plan and then a builder's agreement, which is not super typical for us. We usually put everything together in a developer's agreement, but since they're acting as two different agencies, the review is split. So, United Properties create law.
Just for clarity, we aren't the, we'd love to be the developer of the Les Schwab project, but we are just kind of a land seller and developer of the infrastructure in this project.
Okay. So an example, like on the residential side, it would be Casey from Summer Gate working with Lennar. So Tom would be the Casey, Les Schwab would be the Lennar.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. The only question I have is about the developer's agreement. And I thought after we enacted kind of our water piracy legislation, we had talked about adding something in there. Like, maybe we ended up at, there's some clause in there that covers it.
No, that's a good, good question. So this is the fourth Carver Commons addition. And so I sort of inherited a form that's been very consistent with UP that did not include that language. So this is a little bit different from that form. I'm happy to add that language in for developers' knowledge. It's really a provision that just says that when you're developing the site, you won't utilize public fire hydrants to take water. We've had an issue in the city with contractors taking water illegally out of the city's fire hydrants to support their, their needs on site. I'm glad you brought that up, because I'm happy to add it. If you want to approve the developer's agreement with that caveat, we can get it in there. I'm sure that they aren't going to object to us adding that language.
Probably didn't think we'd be talking about water tonight, but it's become a problem, and it causes some issues for our water system that our residents really don't care to experience. So, yes. So, okay, if we don't have any further discussion, I'll make a resolution. Let's see, where would I make the amendment on the, oh, the developer's agreement one? Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 14, 149-24, providing, approving preliminary plat and final plat for the United Properties.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Johnson, second by Councilmember Welsh. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, I will make a motion to enter into a developer's agreement with United Properties for Carver Commons fourth addition, with the addition of some language about our water piracy ordinance that Dave will craft at a later date.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Johnson, second by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right.
Thank you.
On to 8.2, Les Schwab.
All righty. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we are talking about part two of that application that I'm asking you to not think about together. So for Les Schwab, we're reviewing site plan and a builder's agreement. So again, we're talking about Carver Commons, right at the corner of Highway 212, Jonathan Carver Parkway and Monroe Drive. On the left map, that's our comprehensive plan. So you can see that the property is red. So again, this is guided for commercial users. Some site details about Carver Commons, again, same information as before, guided commercial in the comprehensive plan, it's zoned freeway commercial. Les Schwab is a permitted use in the freeway commercial district. So this has been a really great educational opportunity for staff, and I suspect the council as well. We've gotten some feedback from residents that are engaging in the process, which is really fantastic, but asking questions of like, we need a grocery store, we want a restaurant, why are you moving forward with this when there might be something else? So we've been using this as a great opportunity to let people know, we zone the property, and then those permitted uses in the zoning district can move forward with the project. The city is not the end decider of if it's a Target or it's a Walmart, we say it's zoned commercially. So I just want to thank people who have been engaging in the process. We've had some really helpful conversations with residents that are understanding the process a little bit more, which is always our end goal. All right, off that soapbox. Utilities are available via Monroe Drive for this property, and private streets are throughout Carver Commons. Again, this property will access from Monroe Drive and the slip right that you just approved via the United Properties applications. So Lot 1 Black 1, which you just reviewed for plating, would be the end user site for the Les Schwab project. So some information about Les Schwab, it's primarily tires, brakes, wheels, alignments, batteries, et cetera. They are definitely moving into the Minnesota market with some force. So there's new facilities in Warhead, Worthington, Apple Valley, Outsee, Goant Hutchinson. The proposal tonight before you is a 10,798 square foot building with 38 parking stalls, which meets our city code, supports the building. So the process of where we're at right now, the City Council reviewed this original site plan at their July 1st, 2024 meeting. You shared some great feedback about design, noise, use concerns with staff and the development team. We have partnered together on a building and site plan update, so you'll see updates throughout the packet as well as the presentation. So on the screen now are updated renderings of the facility. I'm gonna skip ahead a couple. So as you move through the packet, as I move through my presentation, I want to note some updates to the building that the development team worked with us on. So the building color has changed. So on the left is the original, that was at the July 1st meeting. The right is what's included for site plan approval in the packet tonight. The roof line has changed, there's increased front facade windows. The, I think the biggest one that we're most excited about is that the canopy along JCP is fully enclosed. So the original version that you saw at the July 1st meeting had a canopy that campers or boats could pull under to be worked on outside. So that did not meet the intent of our city code, so that had to be fully enclosed. So we had some concerns about noise, especially for the neighbors and residents along Spring Creek Drive. But enclosing that portion of the building is a step forward to make sure that this building is complimentary to our community. And then the tire and trash enclosure moved from fence to block material, that was another big point for the City Council. The block has changed with a brick facade as a building material, and it has a really generous landscape plan. So I'm gonna back up a little bit now. So these are the updated photos that are in the packet. So the front of the building will face Next Steps Learning Center and QuickTrip. The back of the building will be along JCP. You'll see on the back of the building those windows that give it a little bit more of a commercial feel as opposed to an industrial black look. And then, if you zoom in pretty closely, you can see the canopy is enclosed in the bottom, but then also gives you a flavor of their generous landscape plan. Trash enclosure, so increased from fence material to block. That's the slide I just went over. So again, left was the version of the July 1st meeting, right is proposed tonight. And then comparison, top version was July 1st, bottom is tonight. So you can see the pretty substantial changes, especially to the back of the building, adding those windows, enclosing the canopy, changing the building color, I think are the most impactful to the project. Another view, so again, July 1st on top, tonight is on the bottom, so the full enclosure of that canopy. A couple other things that are included in the packet to note, on the left is the general layout of the facility. So you can see the lobby and then the workspaces. There's some office and community, or not community, office and employee spaces, as well as the canopy included. And then on the right is the photometric plan, so thinking about light, how it might spill off the site. So if you zoom in really closely, you can see the tiny numbers that show foot candles, but light is not anticipated to leave the site based on their photometric plan. Their landscape plan is really generous, it exceeds what we need for the city code. So it includes six coniferous trees, 12 overstory, 12 understory, 229 deciduous shrubs, 71 coniferous shrubs, and 123 perennials. So working together with the development team, we came up with some ideas of how we can screen that a little bit differently, to make it more of a commercial-looking user in our freeway commercial district. So again, just the perspectives of the building. Not directly related to Les Schwab, but the project overall with United Properties, we are working pretty hard to figure out the trail system in this development, so trying to be really mindful about the users we don't know on site yet, and making sure they'll have access into the connecting trail system. So we've been really mindful, trying to figure out how pedestrians will want to move through the site, not how it might naturally make the most sense on a piece of paper. So we've been thinking a lot about that, working with United Properties, to make sure we're ensuring really good trail access into the site. So again, tonight, you're reviewing a site plan for Les Schwab and a builder's agreement, which I would say is similar to a developer's agreement, but it's for the site plan as opposed to plating. The Planning Commission reviewed the site plan at their September 19th meeting and recommended approval on a 5 to 0 vote. Ron with the development team is here. Ron with the development team is here tonight. I'm going to ask he comes up, introduce yourself, join the conversation, and I'll turn it over to you.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come here. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks for the presentation, Erin, and going over the proposed project. Really excited about it. I guess I'll back up. I'm Ron Isaacson with Cushing Tarrell, four eleven, East Main Street, Suite one oh one, Bozeman, Montana, five nine, seven one five. Happy to answer any, any questions you may have.
Questions? I have a question, and it might be too early. So, I just might need some guidance on, on when to bring it up again. Delivery hours.
Delivery hours. Let's see, Les Schwabs are open eight to five, Monday through Friday. I always forget that. Yeah, eight to six, Monday through Friday, eight to five on Saturdays, closed on Sundays.
Are there times, though, where you're just at the mercy of when a delivery comes? So, it might come at six thirty in the morning?
No, they, it's, it's about one delivery a week. And then plus, they have to come, once a week, they pick up the spent tires.
So, Laura, are you asking, is that going to happen during business hours?
Yes, yes.
Just, what I'm trying to avoid is a resident getting annoyed that they feel like it's just too early.
Oh, too early?
And I don't know what too early is. The one person versus somebody else, but you know, something if it's, you know, a six thirty in the morning delivery.
Won't be a midnight delivery.
No.
Or, you know.
No, their employees, they work eight to six, Monday through Friday. That's when the delivery is going to happen.
Okay.
Between eight and six.
Thank you. Questions?
My other question was a noise question, too. So, obviously, there's going to be mechanics happening at the shop. Erin, do you want to talk a little bit about noise requirements and what might happen with surrounding neighborhoods?
Sure, so.
Right next to it, but close.
That was one of our questions, too. We applied the Les Schwab information to the MPCA, which regulates noise pollution for Minnesota. And Ronnie can probably speak to the details a little bit more, but we found that the amount of noise that will leave the site will not be above what the MPCA has adopted for noise.
Okay.
That's correct, Erin. Yeah, we, we looked into the MPCA requirements and they won't be exceeded. On top of that, the work bays, they face west. And then, on top of that, we have the, those doors under that canopy that wasn't closed. Though, you know, those can be closed. But, yeah, the building has been strategically placed, so noise will, will go west out of those bays.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
I guess I just have a general comment. So, I was the liaison to the Planning Commission, so I've seen this before. Just compliment the developer on taking the feedback and making the improvements that were suggested. The new building looks beautiful. I like the color scheme, the, you know, architecture, the adding the windows along the back. I do live in the neighborhood right across there, so enclosing that, you know, back area, I think will be a huge improvement for noise. The landscaping plan is generous, the enclosing, the used tires, again, with a very aesthetically pleasing, you know, block that matches the rest of the building, I think was a good move and I very much appreciate your, your work on that. So, that's all I have.
So, Ron, I gave you a hard time for not looking like Bozeman. The last time we talked. It is still looking like Bozeman. But I am very appreciative of the changes that you've made to make this align and fit in a little bit better with our community. I think it's significantly improved. The questions that I have for you, I think I asked you this last time, but I forgot. How many employees are you anticipating this winter forever?
It's about one employee per bay. So, it'd be about seven, plus by a couple up front, so about nine employees. And then, you know, on top of that, any business will have a buffer of employees. So, you know, it's going to be a bunch of new jobs for the community. Les Schwabs, they're known for promoting from within and they produce managers that get, have opportunities to go, you know, at some point when they work their way up, they can go start, you know, run another, one of their new stores that they open.
Do these tend to be more full-time career jobs or part-time, a mixture?
Full-time, full-time. That's a lot of, you know, how their careers work.
Fantastic. Completely putting you on the spot. I saw anecdotally some comments about what a good community partner is. Can you speak a little bit about Les Schwab's social responsibility?
I know a little from one observation.
Yeah, I'll take whatever.
I stick to the engineering and getting, and trying to see projects through the, through the, the schedule, through the plan. But I do know they are, they are very much community-involved. You know, they, they started out in nineteen fifty-two in Oregon and in the Pacific Northwest, so Oregon, Washington. But in my experience, you know, seeing, and hearing about their donations to community and being involved with the cities, I know their store managers, they're, from what I've observed, they're very much, it's part of what they're supposed to do and just, you know, making sure they're part of the community.
Fantastic. Thanks for letting me put you on the spot for that one.
Yeah.
My last question is, I just want to confirm that there will be no outdoor taking.
No, no outdoor work. Work's done completely within the bays and under that canopy.
Okay.
And then, can I add one?
Please.
Can you speak to timing?
Yes.
Speak to what?
Project timing.
Timing, oh yeah, project timing.
I thought she said typing, too.
Typing.
I'm old age myself.
We're anticipating the infrastructure work for the, so the project can happen, to be completed summer twenty twenty-five. And then, so contractors aren't getting in the way of each other. And they'll come in, say midsummer, mid, late summer. If everything goes right and weather and all that, so, then expect so early twenty twenty-six opening. It's about a seven-month construction timeline.
That is it for my questions. Thank you.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for Les Schwab.
I'll second. Okay, do you like?
We've got a motion by Councilmember Mock. I'll give the second to Councilmember Welsh, sorry. All those in favor, or any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to enter into a builder's agreement for Les Schwab.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Mock and a second by Councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Congratulations, I'm passing through another step. Okay, moving on, the most anticipated.
Thank you.
Event of the night, we have our annual MS four stormwater permit hearing. And Eric and Nate are both going to stay for it, so don't disappoint them.
Don't you still leave, guys?
Yeah, no. We won't.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Do you want me to give the presentation first and then open the public hearing?
Oh, um, let's make a motion to open the public hearing. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a, a motion by Mayor Johnson, a second by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Public hearing is open. Thank you for the reminder, Erin.
Okay, so, a short presentation tonight. Let's see. Okay, this is the, kind of an annual review of our city's MS four permit. Oh, sorry. Thanks, Erin.
All right. Better. So, the purpose of the annual meeting, we do this on an annual basis. There's kind of three main goals. Number one is just to inform the public, just to kind of give an update of where things are at with the city's stormwater discharge to the, to the waters of the state, receive any input that the public may have on the city's SWIP, which is the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program. And then just to kind of use it as an opportunity to give the council just a general update on, on the MS four and the, and the SWIP. So, that's the, the goals for tonight. And MS four is a municipal separate storm sewer system. So, it's a long phrase, but we say MS four. And basically, it's under the jurisdiction of the Clean Water Act, which is a federal act. Basically, any, any discharge that flows into the waters of the United States is eligible for this MS four program. So, the city of Carver obviously flows to the Minnesota River and the MPCA designates that as an urbanized area in the state of Minnesota that the city of Carver meets a mandatory MS four permit criteria. And the city was authorized originally in two thousand and six as an MS four and has been implementing the permit ever since. So, a SWIP then is a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program and that is part of the overall MS four permit. So, the city has to have a SWIP to talk about how it's going to handle the stormwater discharge within the city. It includes several things such as regulatory mechanisms, so our city code, it'll reference. We talk about educational program opportuion, or opportunities, inspection programs that we do for construction projects and such, how we maintain our system, and then how we document all these things. So, our commitments to the MPCA, they define six minimum measures that we need to, to provide to them. Number one, public education and outreach, public participation and involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction, stormwater runoff, post-construction stormwater management. And then lastly, just general good housekeeping for pollution prevention in the city for our operations. So, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, we're kind of doing this together. So, the, the annual, annual presentation is technically for the prior program year, so for twenty twenty-three, but I just wanted to kind of give a general update for what we've been doing in twenty twenty-four also. So, for the last couple of years, we've not been required to submit our annual permit to the MPCA, or the annual report, excuse me. And that's because they're actually working on a, like a new online portal for submitting the, the annual reports. And they haven't actually got it up and running yet, so they haven't required MS four communities to submit it in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two. So, we've been kind of just holding on to those. We're anticipating that next year, it should be ready to go. So, we'll be submitting several of them next year when it's up and running. But that's just kind of a, a side note. The city public services staff has done all the inspection for the MS four system. That includes, every year, we have to inspect twenty percent of all of our ponds in the city. So, the staff will go out and look at the ponds to make sure that there isn't any outlets that have to get cleaned up, if there's like debris or brush that's growing around the outlet structures. So, they, they check on all that. They check on all the structural BMPs, which is most commonly a sump structure. So, the catch basins will have a, a deep sump. So, any like sand that flows into the curb and gutter will fall into the, kind of the, the sump and they can be vacuumed out with a vac truck or vac trailer. So, it catches all that sediment before it actually gets into the ponds or goes downstream, like into the creeks and, and the river. So, that's inspected every year. And then, from a project perspective, obviously, there's been a handful of development projects that have happened, along with a number of public improvement projects over the course of the last year. So, we inspect all those projects. Any inspections that the developers do, we receive those inspection reports and we, we save those in the file for when we submit those annual reports to the MPCA going forward. So, that's, that's what we do for those. For twenty twenty-five, like I hinted at, we'll, we're anticipating we'll be submitting our reports for the last three years to the MPCA by June thirtieth. The last couple of years, we've been a lot more intentional about keeping our ponds clean with respect to brush removal and trees. So, that's something that Paul Schultz has really been heading up and doing a good job of, just to make sure that we have easy access to do maintenance, like I said, at those outlet structures, so they don't get blocked up and cause issues. We're actually taking a look at our, just kind of our general pond maintenance policy. I mentioned in the work session to a few of you that pond maintenance is something we're going to have to talk about a lot more going forward because a lot of the, kind of the original development ponds, I'll call it, that are from the nineties are at the point where they're probably going to need some work in, in the not-too-distant future. So, we want to really look at, you know, how do we want to approach that systematically? So, we're not, you know, incurring a huge expense, you know, in any one program year. So, just kind of easing into that and figuring out how we want to move forward with pond maintenance when they become an issue. So, the first step in that is we want to implement kind of an inspection program just to monitor the, how deep the ponds are getting with sediment right now. So, one thing we want to actually try to do this fall is take the ponds that are in the Carver Bluffs development, they're, they're the oldest ponds, and just go out there, we can measure the depth of the sediments. What we do is we use a kayak and you can literally just go out there and just take probe measurements to see how deep that is with sediment versus what the original plan depth or the design of the pond is. So, then we know if, okay, yeah, we're still doing really good here. We have a number of years before we even have to really start thinking about this. Or, yeah, these are really getting full, that the ponds aren't doing what they're intended to do anymore from a design perspective. So, we need to start thinking about program, programming and funds to, to clean those out, you know, in the, in the next ten years, you know, for example. So, that's really one thing that we want to hint at this fall and you'll probably see a notice. Staff is working on, like I said, going into the Carver Bluffs area and taking a look at a few of those ponds this fall to kind of see what we have going on, so. And then, obviously, just continuing to refine our documentation, making that more efficient and, and how we, you know, kind of keep that information and have that in case of an audit going forward. So, we're always doing that. And that's, that's kind of really what we have going on here for the near term. And then, future program needs is just kind of working with public services and, you know, just staying up to date with training with staff and making sure that they know what to look for with respect to the SWIP. You know, if someone, they see an illicit discharge, what do they do? De-icing chemicals, that's becoming a big thing, you know, with, with the chloride. So, I know Paul is doing a good job at that, but just kind of continuing to use kind of the leading-edge practices for how we can minimize those, those chemicals getting downstream into, into the waters of the state and then obviously downstream of the state of Minnesota. So, with that, that's the end of my presentation. So, be happy to answer any questions from the public or from the council and.
Questions?
That's it.
I have a couple of questions. So, it's only within the city of Carver, like, right?
Yeah, so our, the MS four is for the city of Carver.
So, the townships, but what if there's property that's in the process of being annexed into Carver? Or do we wait till that's all done?
So, like for newer developments, for example, when we accept those improvements, those, that stormwater piping in those ponds will become the responsibility of the city of Carver under the MS four program.
But that typically happens when all construction is complete. So, a project would be annexed, fully developed, then we accept the improvements.
We accept them, and then who pays for the improvements?
The developer pays for the improvements. So, until those things are accepted, if there's an issue in a pond, like say there's, this, a pond gets silted in with sediment, the develop, we would require the developer to go and clean that pond before we would accept, accept that improvement.
Okay, so we get kind of a, a clean slate?
Yep. So, like during the punch list for a project, we'll say, okay, you need to go clean out this filtration basin, it, there's silt in it and we can't accept that.
I'm just thinking of with all the development and if every year we're supposed to be, you know, checking twenty percent of them.
Yeah.
Could have a backlog.
Sure, no, we, that's part of our kind of general punch list process for development projects.
And then I have a question, just only because you mentioned some of the older ponds, you know, and making sure they're operating correctly, or the way they were designed. What happens if we come across ones that we just kind of realize maybe weren't designed the best? Is that part of this, too?
No, I, I think it's, it's more just to get them back to like the, its original state. Obviously, like, design standards have evolved since the nineties and, you know, requirements for how things were treated, but we just kind of have to use kind of best. but we just kind of have to use kind of best judgment for how we, we maintain them based on, in essence, what, what we have to start with, so.
Okay, original state, that was helpful.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Eric and Nate, any questions?
Nate Royce again. First of all, I'm, didn't even know this existed, and it's wonderful, uh, because I always think of, like lakes and how they get so green and how the fertilizer is getting, and then it makes me a, a little nervous um, about how that affects human beings, um, but. Uh, I really, as a business owner, I'm really interested in the, in the education aspect of this. Some of you know that we adopted a few highway stretches on Highway, uh, County Road forty. Uh, we also adopted a drain, which I don't know if you knew, this is a thing, it's pretty cool, and I think that's one thing we could offer up as opportunities to homeowners and, and business owners. Um, it's a pretty simple process, we adopted the one right in front of, of getaway. And, um, the other education piece that comes to mind is, what do we do with stuff that we probably shouldn't put down the drain? Since I moved to Carver, I've heard of different environmental centers, um, and of course you can track those down if you are inclined to do so, which we are, uh, but I think making maybe an easy-to-understand magnet or something that business owners could put up if they have questions about where to put things, they can have an easy answer. Or a clear contact or someone to talk to at the, at the city.
Very good, it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thanks Nate. Eric, anything from you?
Yeah, I do, this is one of his kind of key civil engineering questions.
Can you introduce yourself and share yours?
Sure, Eric Janzki, nineteen oh six, Green Ash. So, I, I guess the question I have is, is it state statute that dictates the number and size and location of these, these ponds? Kind of what, what's, what's the, the driving factor to design location depth and whatnot of all these ponds?
Sure, so there's, there's minimum standards that are required for like the NPDS permit, um, for pond sizing, but then ultimately the water, the local watershed district has jurisdiction to, they can either meet or exceed those standards, so. In this case, the city of Carver is actually part of two different watershed districts. The, the Carver County Watershed Management Organization and the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District. And those two entities have their own set of water rules. So based on where development occurs, um, that developer has to follow those design standards, which will meet or exceed the, that Minnesota NPDS permit at, at a state level. So, your question was related to like, location or number of ponds. Really that comes down to when the, when the development is, when the developers laying out their overall development, they kind of have to use like the topography to figure out where ponding would, would go. I think from the city's perspective, we try to avoid the number of ponds that are installed if we can, just because the more things that you have in the system, the more complex it is possible, so. For example, um, if you know you're going to have a multi-phase development, if you can get a, a central pond in one location, that'll treat a larger area, that's my preference. It doesn't work that way very often, um, but that's kind of the general, the approach that I take to, to ponding.
Okay. Uh, the following question is, what is the overall purpose of the ponds? Is it to basically replenish the aquifers? Is it to be a catch basin for overflow when the drainage capacity of existing sewer structure is exceeded? Or is it basically a stillwater pond to let particulates settle out before it's discharged into the river and other larger bodies?
Mm-hmm, yep, so the purpose of a pond is, there's actually three main purposes. Number one, which you hit on, is sedimentation, so. When water, um, flows through the storm sewer system, you know, goes into catch basins, flows through the pipes, it goes into a pond. Any sediment that's in there will settle out to the bottom of the pond, so that, those sediments are not transported downstream into our creeks and rivers and streams and lakes. So sedimentation, number one. Number two, it's controlling the rate of the discharge water leaving the site. So, water can't, you can't send more water downstream than what was going downstream in the existing condition. So as, as, um, developments are built, they add impervious surface, which basically, uh, any impervious surface doesn't let the water infiltrate into the ground. So it runs off faster, which provides more flow downstream unless you slow it down. And that's what the pond's purpose is to do, is, is to check that flow, so it can be controlled at the rate at which it discharges. And then number three is, um, the volume of water leaving the site. So, based on that, um, impervious surface not letting the water get in, there's rules for how, how much water you need to, the volume of water you need to retain on your site, so you're not letting a lot more water get downstream as well, so it's, it's sedimentation, it's rate control, and it's volume control.
Okay. I guess the last question is, uh, is it more cost-effective with so many smaller ponds that may need some remediation in the future to let them just silt out and then, uh, build new ones or larger instead of trying to, you know, especially an older one, it may not, you have to quote all that stuff, like, okay, let's just let this thing silt out, retire it, and then go for a larger, newer pond, if, if it's needed.
Yeah, I think that would be a really good approach, the only, the only issue I see with that is typically the ponds are in platted areas, so. It would be a matter of whether or not you have enough area preserved and outlot where you can do such a thing like that.
Okay.
And it has to be within the site, so we won't be able to use like a neighboring property to treat water from the site next to it.
Okay. Cool.
Correct.
That's all, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
I had a couple, quick ones.
Go ahead.
So, uh, I think I rem-
Let's, sorry, to interrupt, let's close the public hearing.
Oh yes, of course.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second. Second by Councilmember Mock, second by Councilmember Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign? Motion passes. Okay, go ahead, Ray.
Yep, uh, so I just had a quick, um, I remember last year we had to make some updates to, based on state statute to our existing, uh, code, so. Our, there were no changes that were already matched up, I think it was the ice. Well, I don't remember what it was, okay.
Ice and the, or the de-icing chemicals and the pet waste. And those, those things have been implemented into the city code already. Um, I think we had a, a public hearing on that.
Last year.
Last year at some point, so there was, there's been no additional changes to regulatory measures that we needed to adjust.
And, and then Eric actually got most of my other questions, I just had one other one, uh, just more of a clarification for the audience, that, um, the, the needed maintenance is budgeted as typically as part of our utilities, right? So that, that's what our stormwater.
Yes, we have, we have, um, in the tenure plan under the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, we do have funds that we have programmed within the next ten years in anticipation that pond maintenance will be necessary within that tenure program. So, the extent of that is still a little bit undetermined, that's why we need to do the, the inspection program first, but we are anticipating that we've, we've been able to kind of ride that original design life for a while now, and things are going to have to start getting maintained in the near future, so.
Cool, that's all I had.
Thank you, Aaron, I like to give you a hard time about the MS four. We all give Aaron a hard time about the MS four, because we see this annually, and so some of us have seen it more than a handful of times, um, but it's important information, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, alright, I think that brings us down to communications, nine point one.
Yeah, just the pet waste, uh, topic at the previous work session the council asked about, if there was a pet waste station at Bluff Park, and there is already one there, we are in the process of ordering and installing another, uh, pet waste station at Olson Park.
Thank you. Alright, council communications, Lori?
I don't have any.
Christine?
Yeah, we had the, um, HBC meeting on the eighth. We had Carver County Historical Society come and give a nice presentation. I'm sure Brent can get ahold of that presentation if anybody's interested. Um, it was also the same night as the fire department open house, so it was running between, I'm sure Courtney will say more about that later. Um, and then we do have, um, we do have coming up, and why, I can't get this up, I'm sorry, it's a different iPad, I'm trying to find it. The HBC, the Heritage Preservation Award, that was talked about also. So we are meeting on Thursday night, Brent, can, can you comment on that for me? Can't get it pulled up.
It's, uh, Thursday at five o'clock, at one thirteen, Third Street East. It's across from Mary Williamson's house.
So that is very disjointed, uh, report, so yes, we have that, and.
The winner are.
Thank you.
Dan and Emily Nielsen.
Thank you.
One twenty-one, Third Street East. Don't go to the address.
Random brother people.
And that, that is actually all I have right now, thank you.
Um, the planning commission meeting for October was canceled, and, uh, the county parks commission meeting got moved to this week, so I don't have anything.
Alright, a handful of updates from me, as Christine mentioned, on October eighth was the Fire Department and Public Services Open House. In addition to all of the chili that is made, there is just a lot of work that goes into that from the Fire Department, from public services, from city staff. Um, and it's cool to see everybody out there, it is a well-attended event in between Stebo Day's, Carver Cleanup Day, and that, I'm not sure what is the most popular, but I know it's a very well-loved, uh, event in the city of Carver. I know you're going to say, no, say all three, I love them all, I was actually thinking, could I rank them, I think, no, I think I love all of them. Um, let's see, October ninth, um, I'm part of the Minnesota Mayors Association. We had a meetup where we got a tour of the Hennepin County Traffic Management Center in Medina. Yeah, which was really cool, so we went in this big room, has big video screens on it. Um, and they can tell us everything that they can track, from, um, car volume to frequency of lights, to occupancy of the vehicles, and it's wild, um, what they're doing and how they can kind of re-time the stoplights based on, they gave an example of a detour where ninety-four was closed for some, some road construction, and they re-timed the lights on where they anticipated traffic would go to go around that on the, the local streets.
Seems like a lot of power.
It's kind of fascinating how they can do that, and they can all do that from their phones. Um, and then we went into, um, uh, Medina with dinner and our annual meeting. Um, on October tenth, we had a League of Minnesota Cities Board Meeting. This is the time of year where we are going into, um, kind of reviewing all the results from the policy committee, and I think Brent, you volunteered on a policy committee this year, right? Which one was it?
Sure.
Okay, so there are like four different policy committees, and then it's the work that Brent and everybody else who volunteers on the policy committees do that are recommendations that are made to the board, um, that really form the basis of the League of Minnesota Cities is going to be advocating for on our behalf in the next legislative cycle. So, um, not too many changes, but it's, um, some significant ones, some, um, removals of legislation that were accomplished in the previous year. I feel like you're going to ask me for an example, please don't, because I can't think of one off the top of my head. But just really interesting work in a really, really busy time for the league. Let's see, on October eleventh, we had a community leaders meeting, that is the mayors, um, and city managers of all the communities in the district along with the county, we met at Victoria Elementary. Dr. Rathke, it used to be that the cities would host those meetings, and Dr. Rathke, because the school district convenes those meetings, is very smartly putting us into the schools where we can bump into kiddos and give high fives as they're getting off the bus and all that kind of stuff, so. Really good updates, um, from Eastern Carver County Schools. Dr. Rathke talked about, uh, these listen and learn sessions that, uh, she's having. I think we all probably got postcards that said when they were, and I think they're mostly late September, earlier, um, October. But she is literally getting out in the community and talking to folks and learning about what they want their priorities to be, uh, or what, what's important to them, what her priority should be in her first one hundred days in this new role to her, as superintendent of the school district. And then, um, last but not least, um, maybe like adding a fourth to most popular Carver events, yesterday was Truck or Treat in downtown Carver, which is two hours of just absolute complete chaos and candy and children and costumes and long wigs blowing in the breeze, um, and llamas and princesses, and just a really good time. There was a decent turnout, um, it was eighty degrees yesterday, um, and it's just wild to think that, uh, we're celebrating Halloween in the city of Carver. So, kudos to Kim Whaley, I think was the main volunteer with that, there is a tremendous amount of support from the Carver Lions and then Hometown Bank, um, volunteered and helped to provide the hot dogs and the volunteers to help serve those. So, a really, really, really fun event, so. That is it for me. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember Welsh?
I'll second.
A second by Councilmember Mock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign? Motion passes, good evening.